Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Workshop on May 11th. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Good afternoon, Overman.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan. Hagan. Kemp. Kemp. Myers. Myers. Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you. You have a corn.
Excellent. Thank you. And I just, just for the record, I know Commissioner Kemp is en route and should be joining us shortly. And Commissioner Myers indicated that she would be out of the office and unavailable today as an unplanned absence. So she did let us know that she wouldn't be able to join us today. Thank you all for joining us. Today we are addressing the comp plan amendments, the out-of-cycle amendments. And we have four, one, two, three, four items to discuss. These are items that I've had on my agenda for quite a long time. So I'm very thrilled that we are addressing many of the issues that will help us continue to grow. And with that, I will introduce Ms. Zornita.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. If I could ask HTV to go ahead and start sharing the presentation. As you indicated, we've got four plan amendments, if we can jump to the next slide, that cover some pretty meaty topics in terms of how we coordinate land use, transportation, and housing. And so all of these are traveling through the plan amendment process fairly contemporaneously. And we thought, since they all related together, it made sense to discuss them in one workshop today. We'll kick that off with Mary Ann Abrahamson discussing the update to the housing element. I'll turn it over to her.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mary Ann Abrahamson, Planning Commission staff here to present an update to the housing section of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Next slide, please. One more. Thank you. So the graphic scene here represents where we are at this point in the overall comprehensive plan update. So the solid puzzle pieces indicated completed chapter. So one water and natural open space are adopted and governance and community and built environment are underway, as indicated by the shaded pieces. So the housing section falls under the community and built environment chapter. So while working through the housing policy updates, in addition to conversations that we've held with industry leaders, we've collaborated with staff across Plan Hillsborough, in addition to the county departments you see listed here. So Affordable Housing Services, Development Services, Community and Infrastructure Planning, Economic Development, and the County Attorney's Office. Next slide. So a major focus of the update is to streamline goals and objectives while focusing on equal access and supply, linking housing and transportation, and revising the affordable housing density bonus. Next slide, please. So we're proposing one all-encompassing goal for the housing section. And that is ensure fair and equal access to housing for all people in Hillsborough County, while accounting for population growth, climate change, and affordability. Next slide. Thank you. So from this goal, we've identified seven key objectives, which expand on various topics pertinent to housing, including supply, development incentives, the density bonus, finance strategies, transportation infrastructure, equal access, and sustainability. Next slide. So our first proposed objective, "Supply," reads, "Support a range of affordable housing stock to meet current and projected housing needs." The policies under this objective acknowledge that serving people is at the core of our work. So we have proposed policies that support education and other services that increase the understanding and access to housing. In order to most efficiently increase the supply, we also must encourage partnerships and collaboration across county departments, jurisdictions, developers, and residents. And the supply that we support must be diverse to provide a variety of housing types for all residents of Hillsborough County. Next slide. So proposed objective two is "Development Incentives," which reads, "Prioritize the provision of affordable housing and implement development incentives that increase affordable housing opportunities." Those supporting policies include an administrative angle. For example, reviewing regulatory processes to ensure an applicant does not incur excessive costs or delays, and development tools which encourage a variety of approaches like flexible site design, density bonuses, and others to encourage an increase in housing production and redevelopment. Next slide. So our third objective is the Affordable Housing Density Bonus. You may recall that the Planning Commission retained consulting from Banash to undergo a study resulting in an update to this density bonus. The study focused on clarifying the overall language, adding a transportation proximity bonus, and proposed a range of area median income set-asides. Next slide. So additional policy recommendations out of that study include removing the significant economic development project proximity, which called for an affordable housing density bonus project to be located within three miles of an employment center containing 200 jobs. So due to the changing market, we felt that this criteria would be appropriate to remove. However, the process and criteria are proposed to be the same no matter the size of the project. It must be wholly located within the urban service area. And we are proposing that an existing plan development may be amended by a minor rather than a major modification when requesting to include an affordable housing density bonus. Next slide. So the base bonus structure is unchanged with the exception of SMU 6 due to the nature of that future land use category. However, we're proposing an additional bonus based on proximity to a bus emphasis corridor. You'll be seeing, as Melissa indicated, our presentation on the bus emphasis corridors later on in this workshop up next. And so you'll receive additional information on that concept shortly. So the minimum 20% affordable criteria remains unchanged. However, the maximum area median income has now increased from 80% to 120%. And we have proposed minimum set-asides for less than 60% and less than 80% AMI when using the Affordable Housing Density Bonus. Next slide. Thank you. So through conversations between the consultant, staff, and industry professionals, we've heard a recurring theme on certain items that directly impact the delivery of affordable housing, aside from the obvious funding sources. So these are things that the county has influence over, including impact fees, administrative approvals, application review, and inspection timelines, and parking requirements. So we continue to work with county staff on these items, but we welcome your feedback on these as well today. Next slide. So our fourth proposed objective deals with finance strategies and reads, "Support a range of housing finance strategies to help ensure the supply of housing is consistent with the demand." And a major theme in the supporting policies is exploration of avenues the county may take for financing housing improvement and development, including local government guarantees for loans made by the local banking community for affordable housing, for example. Next slide. Our next proposed objective is "Linking Housing and Transportation," which reads, "Strategically locate housing in conjunction with supportive transportation infrastructure." And in order to do so, we must coordinate across departments and with partner agencies. So although this objective does not contain a comprehensive list of all the linking housing and transportation efforts throughout the county, we do make that connection in this objective and we acknowledge the impact of planning for both of those things in conjunction with one another. Next slide. Our sixth proposed objective is "Equal Access to Housing," in which we explore policies that support housing for a range of residents across all abilities and prohibits the discrimination of individuals with special housing needs, while encouraging practices that result in housing stability. So these policies touch on items like housing screening practices, aging-in-place, and housing independence for people experiencing homelessness. Next slide. And our seventh and final objective refers to sustainable and innovative housing and reads, "Promote safe, sustainable housing that is adaptable to changing demographic and environmental condition." So these policies consider the relationship between housing, environmental health, and physical well-being, while promoting practices like adaptive reuse, residential retrofit to reduce displacement risk due to natural disasters, and energy-efficient housing construction. Next slide. So the housing section project page is now live and contains a link to the draft policies. It also has an area for public comment, and we'll continue to update this as we move through the process. And next slide. So we're currently planning a virtual lunch and learn for the public on June 3rd. And we'll be open and available for meetings and questions from the public throughout the summer. And we continue to refine the policy language ahead of another anticipated board workshop in June, with a transmittal hearing in August and an adoption hearing in October. So this concludes my presentation, and I am available for any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate the presentation and the hard work that's been done to get us there. I did have a couple of comments that I'd like to share. And it probably is in the language, which I have not read all the way through as of yet. But I got the pleasure of attending the Resilience and Energy Assessment of Communities and Housing Conference on Friday, which is a regional, it was planned by the Regional Planning Council. Anyway, it was wonderful meeting. It was absolutely wonderful meeting of many of the regional partners that are addressing resilience in our community. And I know we have a lot of language in our comp plan that address resiliencies. But there were a couple of observations that, if they're in our language, wonderful. If they're not, let's, I'd like to make some suggestions. And thank you VPN for kicking me out. I can't see you anymore, but let's just go there. The first is, there was an observation about the benefits of developing resilience, building codes or representations of ways that we could improve environmental-friendly types of processes within our housing stock. And I noticed in one of the slides, it did mention environmental and sustainable. But examples that were utilized were adopting policies. For example, we're investing in solar housing, I mean, in affordable housing to develop a ranking for those types of projects that would include a preference towards offering solar to assist in covering, if it didn't help all the residents there, that it would actually assist in the overall power needs of the community, per se. So for example, in a multifamily housing, it would have solar that would actually provide power to the common areas, to the power plant, to the HVAC plant, as well as the lighting in the surrounding areas as a way of reducing the overall cost of energy in a sustainable way to the community, in line with our efforts to reduce our energy usage. Another was to recommend or give bonus points for electric car, electric charging stations, or have it building that infrastructure into the community, where it was, for example, in a multifamily, to allow for residents to benefit from advanced technology when it comes to lowering their gas costs and possibly using electric vehicles to support that sustainable effort. And another was access to broadband, where it was built as part of the infrastructure as a requirement. What we've learned during the pandemic, how critically important that access to services was reliant on being able to come to our website. Because that's how residents find out what we have available in the way of government services and government support services. But several of our affordable housing communities or housing communities either have inefficient ways of accessing it. In other words, it doesn't come into the building where it's available. Oftentimes, a vendor will charge $500 a door for installing on a retrofit basis, rather than having it be part of the infrastructure, just as you would have power, water, you know, and sewer. So those are incentives or bonus opportunities for making sure that we're developing the sustainable and equitable access to those that are in need of housing as a way of addressing those issues. The second item that didn't necessarily have to do with building structures other than some designs that actually created environmentally friendly neighborhoods. We are with some of our land code where we're building mixed-use types of communities that include childcare or as a facility without having to get a special, you know, grant or, you know, any kind of community service that a family might benefit from having locally on-site or in, within the community. I think it's an important part of the process, which we have referenced in here, that optimal design would include where services are either within walking distance or within attainable distance without having to get in the car. And so that, I think, is a priority that does need to be reflected in our overall comprehensive planning as it pertains to actual where people live and what resources they need to make their lives work. Of course, being close to job centers is a benny, but the others is very much important, given that about 60 to 70% of most families' trips are for errands, not necessarily just going to work and back. So I think that's an important part of our overall housing approach. Additionally, it was very clear, and we were actually addressing it in the next comp plan amendment, but it was very clear that the key element of making housing accessible as well as affordable. So there were two levels of focus. Workforce housing to make sure that employers are able to provide housing for their, or at least have a way of their employees actually working and living kind of close to each other. But more importantly, being able to get employees because of the distance required when shortfalls, just as we are experiencing now, become urgent, is to focus on the connection between transportation and housing. They are inextricably linked. When there is not transit or transportation elements associated with how we grow or warehouses are put, it actually puts an excessive burden on a family's financial welfare and access to jobs, healthcare, all those other things. So the link between transportation, mass transit options was a very, very high priority. And while we do that to some extent with our placement and bonusing with affordable housing, I think it needs to be across the board. It's not just affordable housing that needs this. And we do need to address the issue of bias. Because unfortunately, there is a perception that affordable housing is bad housing or bad neighbors, and that is so far from the truth anymore. The examples that were illustrated on Friday of the affordable housing projects that were using a very resilient and supportive, energy-efficient type of plan were beautiful. You would not be able to drive down the street and tell whether or not it was affordable or not. So addressing bias of the issue associated with economic mobility, I'll just call it that, is real. But also, we're running into a real issue, I think, locally here because of the constraints we have on transportation investment and by not paying attention to how in length they are, of communities pushing back on any kind of density because of the pressures or perceived pressures without solutions to transportation readily available of, you know, we don't want more houses here because that means more cars. And that bias is not only founded, but it's very real. And we can't solve the problem if we continue to allow that to prohibit the access to, you know, holistic types of communities that also take care of all of our workers. And the reason that became really important is because we have various different supportive systems in place when it comes to housing for low-to-moderate-income individuals. And even those that are making, you know, 100% of AMI anymore right now currently cannot find a place to live. I'll give you an example. While we have a tenant bill of rights in Hillsborough County, that it makes it illegal to discriminate for source of income. What's happening now is that some of our partners that have provided housing that set aside for individuals with housing vouchers have chosen to no longer participate in the program because we only have 0.7 months of inventory available in Hillsborough County for housing. So in other words, there's only three-quarters of a month that a property is available and listed for rent or for sale in Hillsborough County before it's scooped up. And normally, the rate is, you know, six to nine months. So we are in a serious shortfall situation. So everything we can do to actually build smart, build more, and build it where it supports the economic wherewithal of families and businesses is most important. To give you an example, I met with McDill yesterday, second-largest employer in Hillsborough County. And based on the individuals that are by orders told to work in Hillsborough County, they are unable to find housing for those individuals that are arriving here. A year ago, they had 68 multifamily complexes and single-family homes that were participating in their housing assistance program so that the housing allotment got paid directly to the landlord. They currently have 32. And we're getting calls that many individuals that own properties are no longer accepting, and no longer being eligible as HUD or Section 8, as it's commonly called, housing. They're no longer continuing their application as being a property that is available to rent to housing-subsidied individuals. So there lies the problem. Without having at least 20% set aside for housing-supportive workforce, like our teachers and our, you know, a lot of our government workers, a lot of our retail workers, a lot of our tourism-based workers are having significant difficulty and do qualify for those housing subsidies, but are unable to find places to use them. So any policies that we can put into place that would encourage the minimum of 20 and even more for perpetuity, so that we don't gentrify communities. Because the issue of gentrification, when we redevelop a community, oftentimes occurs largely because market rates, when properties are close to other amenities like transit and jobs, tends to outstrip the earning ability of a very large part of our community. So where are our policies for how we build and where we provide incentives to provide for all levels of income that are part of our community? On an equity basis, it needs to be, in my opinion, for perpetuity so that there is a, the less of a risk of, you know, building a community in an area where we're investing in, you know, rapid transit or BRT or any of the above that takes somewhere like 10 years to do. We get it approved, we get it in the queue, and it takes, you know, 20 years to build it. But our covenants on these affordable housing properties are not for perpetuity. So about the time it expires, either 20 or 30 years, it immediately gentrifies. Because it's now a desired-with-amenities property that can demand a much higher rent than the workforce in the communities that are established there. So I think there's elements of our structure that the Affordable Housing Advisory Board is addressing, recognizing some challenges. And if it's not in our comp plan, guess what? It won't happen. So because that's part of our approval process. And I think if we include those kinds of issues as we approach continuing to address the growth in our community, we won't be always behind the power curve, which has been the case at least for my lifetime here, for the last 36, 7 years. I keep watching us be behind the power curve. And I think that's an advantage that we need to take into consideration in order to level the playing field and to encourage smart new housing as well as rehabilitation of communities that have an opportunity to serve our communities and our workforce and our families. I am not seeing any hands raised. Is, are there any other commissioners that have comments or questions they'd like to address?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I think this is very exciting, very exciting work, certainly really needed. And, you know, Commissioner Overman and I were both just talking about the need to make sure we're addressing transportation with affordable housing in our land use. So, and I know Commissioner Overman has made this point many times, as have I, that the people who are struggling to afford a home are those people that, you know, we really need to help with transit to get to their jobs. They're the ones who are having the most trouble affording a car for every single person in the home. And so I love the piece on Slide 3, that additional bonus based on proximity to a bus emphasis corridor. I think that's getting at what we're getting at. But I wonder if that carrot is really enough when the only stick is that it has to be anywhere inside the urban service area. And certainly, you know, that's good, inside the urban service area. But I just would ask staff to consider any other ways we might really get at planning to put affordable housing where the transportation transit is or at least has some hope of coming, is planned on some long-range transportation plan or something. But, you know, that, I think that's-
I think the next presentation, the next amendment will dive deeper in on that topic. So that will be perfect.
Okay, great. And a couple, just a couple more points. I see that this would increase, this proposal would increase the maximum AMI affordable, I mean, average, what is it?
Average median income.
Yeah. Increase from 80%, which is our cap now, to 120%. And I don't see any justification for doing that. You know, have we run out of, have we satisfied all the needs of the 50% and below and the 80% and below? I don't think so. And I certainly think, you know, incentivizing, giving density bonuses for 120% is much too high when you're talking about average median income. Incentivizing housing for the average in our county with essentially taxpayer money in terms of impact fee waivers and other incentives is, I don't know that it's warranted. I don't, I don't, I'm not feeling that it's something that I would support until the day comes when we've really addressed 50% and 80% AMI. When we were looking at this at one point, well, anyway, that's, I've made that point before. But I would certainly like to see more data. I understand the theoretical arguments of there are people making average wages and a little above that are having trouble in this market. But I'm not sure that's where we want to give- But I'm not sure that's where we want to give away impact fees and, you know, subsidize housing until we've really done a better job of keeping people off the streets and addressing the needs of the most vulnerable. The other point I'll make is the minimum 20% of development shall be affordable to get the bonus. That's unchanged from what we have. I think we should look at maybe getting a little more creative with this and consider giving higher bonuses to developments that are giving a higher percentage of their units to affordable housing, so that, so that there is some incentive and reward to those who are going, you know, who are actually creating more affordable housing in their, you know, I think it kind of makes sense, too, that the additional density is being used for affordable housing. So, the more of that density you're using for affordable housing, the more of a bonus I think you should get. It makes sense to me. So, I think that's the suggestions that I have here. I would ask, like, there was a working group. Can you talk a little bit more about who was the community partners and how was the public outreach on this to arrive here? Thanks.
Sure. So, part of, as a part of the study, the consultants and staff spoke with industry leaders, so primarily, you know, jurisdictions in our area that also use an affordable housing density bonus, to hear about their experiences with how their structure is currently enacted today, to get some kind of lessons learned from our jurisdictions in our surrounding area, and as well as the developers that builds in our community. So, the public engagement portion is coming up now in June. We'll be holding a public meeting in June and doing some more engagement with the public to come. So, outside of just, you know, the industry leaders. So, that is to come. And we'll bring that back to your next workshop and the results of that outreach to your next workshop in June.
Thanks. Just one comment on that. I would say that, you know, the input of the industry leaders, the stakeholders, the developers themselves, who will be getting the bonus, is invaluable and essential to a successful program. At the same time, I think we have to recognize what, you know, what their perspective is and be sure that we're getting this perspective of community partners who are really responding and working every day with the actual people we're trying to help, you know. So, and we have to, as you're doing this, hopefully, consider the source. I mean, I could see where the, for example, the industry partners and stakeholders and developers would want to see the AMI lifted to 120, because a lot of them, some of them are coming in with large development proposals at that price point. So, yay, they get a bonus. But is that really where the need lies? Let's check with the, with the people who are working with, as I say, the people, the individuals that we're trying to help with this program. So, and consider the source as you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I appreciate those comments. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And I'll kind of emphasize just some of the points I've heard already. The first thing that struck me was the 80 to 100. I was strongly opposed to anything over 100% in the past, because I just thought it was ridiculous, considering our needs and our rents in this area, which in the past weren't, it was a lower-cost place to live. It has changed dramatically in the past year, but I still abide by the 80 to 120%. One thing is, I just don't think we have to add to the inflation of these things. And they are inflated. In many cases, the rent increases that are going on are above costs, you know, are just, are, some people consider themselves lucky in this economy and are just, you know, charging so much without, as their mortgages have gone up or anything. I mean, these are for the developers or owners of these places. So, I very strongly, I just, I do not like the idea of ever going over 100%. And it just seems a very standard thing to go 80 to 120%. The, over the last 40 years across the nation, our housing market has become incredibly, incredibly skewed. It was always somewhat skewed, but the building has going, been going on at the top end and nowhere, or very little. It's progressively gotten less and less and less for lower income. Everybody wants to compete to sell housing at the top end and pencil it out and get the higher profits. And that's in terms of what's available. Again, I think we have to look at how we can reduce that and address the needs of all these people, especially in this area, with our low wages. And they're still low wages, and they've stayed stagnant for 40 years now. And there was a little bump, I guess, in the last year, but it really was not significant. The, someone earning $15 an hour, which at one time was considered, you know, that was way too big a burden, but if you're earning $15 an hour and working 40 hours a week and you don't even have health care, or vacation, or sick leave, you're going to get somewhere around $31,000. After taxes, you're going to be at 24/7. And by the way, a car costs about $10,000 a year to support. So, I just think we have to be mindful of all this when we start to talk about going above 100% when our needs are so, so, so great. The other thing is, I know it was brought up about HUD or here, the Tampa Housing Authority, that does the federal housing. And for forever, I think maybe for more than a decade, they had a waiting list of something like 20,000 people. The average wait was seven years, and many people had moved or had, you know, no longer needed the housing for any variety of reasons after seven years. And the list had gotten so overwhelmed that they shut it down a couple of years ago, wiped it out, and decided to open it up again. And I think they got somewhere near the same number of needs in a very short time. So, I think we have to be very aware, again, of the need under the 100% mark. This is all for that, even the 80% mark, in terms of giving any kind of bonuses or incentives or anything to meet our affordable housing, housing needs. In terms of the funding that we give, which I found confusing at first, when we give our $10 million, and we're looking at that kind of funding or the things that the county can provide, we have far more rigorous standards than this. And as I understood, with those kinds of financial incentives that we give, those were, I thought, pretty much 50 years of providing affordable housing or in perpetuity. And I understand, too, when we're doing some of the money to keep affordable housing affordable, and we're investing in renovations, that those are now being signed up for longer periods of time or in perpetuity. The standard that I understood us to have now for the density bonus was something like 15 years, which I just thought was almost like, why even bother? And I like Commissioner Smith's idea of increasing the bonus prorating based on the number of units and make that possible, because that is the whole point. And that could be an incentive of sorts for that. So, I think those are the thoughts that I had about this, and I think this is good. We've really needed to look at this in many ways, we all know. We have, we had a crisis, we've had a crisis, but we have an incredible issue here, not unlike the rest of the country, but very extreme, like things happen in Florida, but in this area with speculators and investors and vacancies and all that, just pumping up our price points here. So, we're in a serious issue, a serious problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I appreciate that. And to the, to the point regarding the AMI and the densities and the correlation between the two, you know, 80% of average median income is still an average of the income here. So, there's obviously a lot, a lot more folks that have more than, you know, more than the limits to qualify for affordable housing. But when you carve, especially with a family, if you have children, when you carve, you know, $20,000 off their income, which is not part of the equation, because we have to own a car, there are a significant number of families that are making over 100% AMI that still have no access to housing, and they have children. So, I'm not necessarily opposed to raising it for some percentage to address that middle-sized homes that provide housing for families. Because then you've got an average median income for a larger number of people, rather than, you know, one 500-square-foot single apartment, you know, that a single person lives in. But here's what I would like to also say, what I heard on Friday, when we spoke to four developer home builders that had been, have been doing this all over the country and with a passion for building for affordable housing. I mean, it's their calling. And what they said is, you know, we need the subsidy to be able to make the numbers work. When we set aside, you know, 20% for 30% AMI and of the entire complex, you know, some percentage, which they all are now, they, what they do is they average to 80%, but we'll have some that are at 100, 120, some at 80, some at 50, and some at 30. So, when you can calculate the percentage of all of the units that are available in affordable housing project, there's two factors to take into consideration. Does it average out where you have a wide spectrum of income but also have affordability? But the flip side of that, have you set aside enough money in our housing budget to be able to make the subsidies for those income ranges for the life of the project? And we've never really addressed that when it comes to how we allocate resources towards housing. We have, because we set aside our own trust. We have, because we are limited to 1.9% tax credit deal, and we have, you know, 4% tax credit deals. But when the legislature pulls a third of our Sodowsky funds for a down payment assistance program, where the monies came from our sale to funds, which is where those tax credits come from, we have less dollars to be able to make that work. So, you know, the policies that actually support enhancing and adding to the density actually also adds to the affordability. You get more units, you have more income strata across the spread. But if we're giving away the density without the affordable housing element being met, and we do that on occasion, right? We don't have, if we have areas that we need density and we are using a density bonus, or in the future item where we're transferring, you know, density from one area to another, as Commissioner Smith said, doesn't mean that it needs to be in the urban service area. It needs to be attached to our transportation plans and efforts to provide transportation to save that individual $10,000 a year or $20,000 a year for, to head a household family. Because that is really the issue. And that density is needed in those areas where we've made a commitment to, or we're planning on making a commitment to, mobility for those families, to help them with having more discretionary fixed income available to cover their housing costs, which includes not only the rent, but their utilities and other housing expenses like insurance, renters' insurance, and/or homeowner's insurance, which has actually ruined the whole calculation right now. Because I don't believe anybody right now is spending 30% of their wages on housing in Hillsborough County, that's for sure. But to that point, the density needs to be tied to affordable housing, period. I mean, I'm really of the mindset that, you know, it isn't impossible to do inclusionary zoning, and we don't have a policy for when we decide to put that into place. But it is a function of the finances available to make the developer whole, or having the right mix of various different incentives to help them become whole, or tax credits. But at the end of the day, the housing subsidy number has to be taken into consideration. And at 120, there's very little subsidy. At 30, there's a lot of subsidy. So, using an average target may be appropriate, but majority of the people, even the junior folks that work at MacDill, with their housing subsidy being considered part of their income, they don't qualify for, you know, at 120. But they are an important element, and they can't afford to live in Hillsborough County anymore. They have 562 people in a waiting list, and they only have 500 units on base, roughly. And basically, they're just, they're driving 30 to 60 miles to work every day, which is adding to their overall housing cost. And if they're able to use the van pool, that helps, but it doesn't make up the difference. So, I agree that density, the density calculation and formula needs to be reflected, that it is in either areas that we've identified as, you know, transit-oriented development zones or bus emphasis corridors. And then in those corridors from now on, it must include affordable housing, and that's what inclusionary zoning does, in order to get any of the density bonuses. So, I don't know how to put that into a comprehensive plan, but it is critical in order for us to actually have the realities of a diversified workforce, especially one like Hillsborough, where tourism, service industry, service industry associated with caring for children and elders, healthcare industry, many of our workforce cannot afford to live in Hillsborough County anymore, because we haven't planned accordingly. And I'd like to make sure that our housing policy reflects an urgency there, but also just common sense, to make sure that we're allowing our workforce to have places to live that are of great value, just as anybody else that makes a higher income. I'll stop there.
Absolutely. This has been great feedback, and I want to make sure we have time to get through the other three amendments.
Sorry.
Commissioner Smith is signaling she wants to speak also.
Very quick, very quick point, sorry. But a kind of question, though. What is the policy with regard to, besides density bonuses? We can waive impact fees, they're waived administratively. How is that incentive? How does that work? And are we talking about any changes there?
I don't believe that that is, I mean, while it's broadly discussed in the comprehensive plan, that there should be incentives like that contemplated by the county. I think that is administered, administered outside of the comprehensive plan process. So, that might be something for us to get with Cheryl Howell about and bring back some information on.
Because it seems to me that's a good opportunity. Cause it seems to me that's a good opportunity for carrot stick incentivizing of, you know, if you're in a transit corridor, you could pay less mobility fees. But if you're not, well, we're going to need those mobility fees for the sidewalks and everything and road maintenance. Okay, thanks.
And I'd be recognized for just a fast second. I do think this brings to light not the comprehensive plan, but our affordable housing policy at the county. And looking at that, because that's where these changes, I mean, we can say things in the comprehensive plan, but that's where these are really made. And then in terms of clarification, I'd just like to say that AMA is related to, AMI is related to family size. It's not a flat earnings. It is increased as the family size increases. So that is taken into account and, and makes a difference.
I absolutely agree. And it's, I do believe that the incentive, the bonus is the housing incentive strategy that was provided in our board agenda several weeks ago that really sort of outlined a framework for the incentive strategies for affordable housing. And that is part of the policies. It does have various different levels of incentives, including expedited processing. One of the policies that has not been fully explored is whether or not there's an opportunity for the county to do the comprehensive plan and zoning changes for a developer that could expedite the overall process. So if, for example, we develop a bus incentive zone or a bus incentive, whatever it's called, you know, bus emphasis zone or a TOD zone, that we do that comp plan and zoning change so that it expedites the opportunity and also lowers the cost to the developer. We've not yet done that, but I am definitely looking at those best emphasis zones to identify how we can incorporate that policy as part of a way of really supporting growth where it needs to be. So with that, do you know other comments, Ms. Onidi? Do you want to go to the next?
Sure. That, that is about the, the most perfect lead in that I could ask for to the next amendment because we're now going to talk about the concept of bus emphasis corridors that Mary Ann referenced in the affordable housing element of the comp plan. But we've got some specific language for the land use element that we're looking at. And Beth Alden and I will be tag teaming this presentation and I'll let Beth kick it off.
Thank you so much. Two years ago, Commissioner Overman called several county departments and agencies together and challenged us to do a better job coordinating housing and transportation, particularly transit, so that we stop doing things like providing incentives for affordable housing at locations that HART can't continue to afford to provide bus service. And so I'm pleased to report that we have continued to meet and collaborate since then. And so we have a new proposal for you that is this, there's contributions here from, from HART staff, from Hillsborough County Community and Infrastructure Planning, Development Services and Housing Departments, and built on research co-sponsored by the Planning Commission and the TPO. It proposes a new organizing principle for growth and multimodal infrastructure, looking beyond fixed guideway transit corridors, which are a tangible, physical commitment to a specific location. This would be a policy commitment requiring agreement between the county and the transit agency on geographic areas of focus. And I will turn it over to Melissa for the next, next few slides.
Okay, great. Yes, if we can go to the next slide. The, the purpose as described by Beth is to identify some areas where we can expand housing opportunity while at the same time creating transit supportive development patterns that improve walkability and safety. And really channel and focus our opportunities for redevelopment. If we can go to the next slide. This accomplishes a number of goals that are already within the, the county's comprehensive plan in which the board discussed at workshops probably close to two years ago, when you outlined a framework for sustainable growth going forward. And the, the, this would increase affordability not only by providing additional incentives for affordable housing along, in these areas, but also as you spoke of, or several of you spoke of, tying the location of that housing to where there's transportation access, which reduces the overall cost to a, to a household because they have choices of how they can get around if they're located on a bus route. It advances many of the smart growth goals of focusing growth and infill and redevelopment within the urban service area. We've talked many times that the urban service area itself is not all created the same. There are different areas and this begins to be a way to identify those places where we might want to encourage more growth within the urban service area. It also enhances sustainability, health outcomes and safety by creating walkability, opportunities to not utilize the car as the primary mode of transportation, providing services in closer proximity, jobs in closer proximity to where people work and focusing on these corridors that the county has already identified, many of them through their context classification, as, as needing to be a different form of infrastructure, a different development pattern that has a higher priority on pedestrians and bicycles. So next slide. So what we're looking at is that there is kind of a hierarchy of places within the urban service area. We talk a lot about transit oriented development, which is fabulous, but to get the maximum benefit of transit oriented development, you need fixed guideway that's not going to change. Something like bus rapid transit, rail. That is, on those types of transit investments, we're going to see the maximum return on investment from the marketplace reacting to that. But we believe that we can also get a opportunity out of bus corridors because there, if there is a commitment that the bus corridor isn't going to change. So that a developer can rely on that, so the county can rely on it as you're approving higher density in these locations, that, that people will have a choice, that they don't have to just be reliant on cars for transportation. So that would be the next level down, kind of from fixed guideway transit oriented development. We would have bus emphasis corridors. Ideally, those have 15 to 30 minute headways in local bus service. And then there are other places, which when we get to the fourth agenda item today, the locational criteria item, we'll talk about some of the, the commercial centers that we already create within our comprehensive plan, making those more compact and walkable and then further connecting along our existing corridors. So there, those would be places enabled through our existing comprehensive plan in other ways. Next slide, please. Corresponding with that hierarchy, we're going to provide the greatest amount of incentive to the places that have fixed guideway transit. So that's where we're going to see our highest densities and intensities. And right now, the focus, as many of you were talking about in the TPO meeting this morning, you know, is looking along that bus rapid transit line from downtown to the university. So places like Fowler Avenue, Florida, Nebraska, those are going to be top priority. But what comes next is a more moderate amount of density increase along some of these corridors where we have more frequent bus. And at the same time, we might be looking at things like a little bit higher building height, orientation of the buildings being more towards the roadway so that it's a more walkable development pattern and perhaps some parking reductions to make that type of development pattern more viable. Next slide, please. So where my, oh yes, go ahead, Beth.
You can cover it. We've tag teamed this one enough times. We could probably both do both slides, but then we wanted to share with you an initial map of some geographic areas that we think would make sense to designate. So this is based on the current HART bus system. And we've just differentiated between dark green, where we have bus service at least every 30 minutes today and light green, where we have bus service at least every 60 minutes today. And identifying those as existing corridors and emerging bus emphasis corridors. With the idea that when, if and when HART has additional resources, the first places that HART is likely to invest would be the corridors where there is 60 minute service today and stepping that up to 30 minute service or hopefully higher. And because the framework for our doing this is looking long range, we want to propose a geographic structure for you that will provide incentives over time and be reasonably stable over time. We will be tweaking this map probably over the summer. HART is doing a comprehensive operations analysis over the summer. So we will be double checking this map and will be able to make some final adjustments before it, it comes back to you.
Yeah. And before we jump to the next slide, I did want to mention that the, the red areas on the map are properties that we've identified have some indicators for potential redevelopment. And we think that is important to look at where they align on some of these corridors or where they may align on corridors that HART is not currently serving. Because there may be opportunities through coordinating with HART in their transit development plan to identify future service corridors where we also see that there's a lot of potential for redevelopment. So let's go to the next slide.
Wait, wait, don't go away. Don't go, don't go away. Please don't go away. Come back. And I, and it relates exactly to what you just said. Okay. So one of the other things that I looked at and the policies that we've adopted, at, at least as a policy for affordable housing, is that we are prohibiting or, or choosing to give less priority or push back on affordable housing being developed in the floodplain. And so, or, or in flood prone conditions. The REACH conference on Friday specifically outlined where affordable housing and attainable development for resiliency and addressing sea level rise and climate change suggested that every one of those red spots would not be a good place to go. So there's, there is a conflict. And the reason that's attractive is because 41 runs right there, right? And there's a rail line that runs right there, right? But there's also 301, which is a little further over that could provide a BRT service down to Wy Mama, which is an area we focused on developing a, you know, a clustering, you know, comprehensive community. So that is in dire need of, of affordable housing as well as transit support because there is, their area, their average AMI is closer to 30% for the large part of the, many of the people who live there and have lived there for generations. And, and they clearly are with a level of income are not able to afford a car. So transit, they're very transit dependent population. So I appreciate the light green in where it is on the map. But I think if we are going to develop housing property, housing policy and tying it to transportation planning, there's an opportunity, I believe, to work in the county's area where there is not density, but we've, because of what we've done over the last 25 years. And there's no walkability and there's no connectivity, but there is still a need for transportation. And there's a need to have access to it and to some degree. So those corridors like 301, that's outside of that, that is an opportunity for addressing a, say, an emphasis corridor, a transit emphasis corridor that could support housing in the area that's already there.
Absolutely. Yes, some of the pieces of analysis that are not illustrated on this map that we are doing is looking at what the, the land use categories are, where the coastal high hazard area is, where there are other environmental features. And certainly a number of the things that highlight as red may not be suitable for redevelopment for a number of those reasons. So that's absolutely something, South County and 301 is something that jumped out at us as well as a potential opportunity. So let's go to the, to the next slide if we can. I've covered a number of these, so I won't go in detail on this. But we're looking at policy language that addresses the mix of land uses, the development intensity, providing bonuses that would, just as you all spoke about, enable people to bypass the plan amendment process. And for example, you've seen a number of comprehensive plan amendments on State Road 60 recently, where there is frequent bus service. And you all have been supporting those increases in density. Perhaps we can enable those through this density bonus structure because they're on a bus emphasis corridor and we can expedite their process by enabling them to go straight through a rezoning. Looking at the form and, and, and how the development occurs is important to encouraging the walkability, addressing parking and the potential reduction in parking because of the proximity to transit service and, and things like streetscape and other multimodal facilities. Next slide, please.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized. Rita, can't hear you. You're muted, ma'am.
Thank you. Having somebody skip a plan, the plan, the comp plan process and go straight to zoning when the comp plan doesn't match, I guess you'd have to go back and, and then just administratively change the comp plan to match what they did so that if they, once they got the zoning. I mean, what I like, what I would like better than that and off the top of my head with, you know, and maybe you, I'm, I'm just offering it. I haven't thought much about this. It seems so kind of radical to me. So maybe we could talk some more and I'd get okay with it. But off the top of my head, I think what would make more sense is to just do one big plan amendment. And, and Melissa, we've talked about this, that updates the plan. It's a, it could be a staff initiated plan amendment that just updates the plan in a couple of areas like this that says, well, all right, this is where we want more, more density. Of course, as soon as I'm saying that, I'm thinking about what Commissioner Overman just said and what I myself have said at some of these conversations about, well, once we give away density like that, what's the point of having a density bonus for either affordable housing or transfer of development rights from the rural area to the urban area? So.
And that's where the affordable housing allocation is required. In other words, you're not building in that area unless you're offering a minimum of 20% AMI affordable housing or it's just not happening, no matter how much you pay for in transfer of, of available rights, you know, of density rights.
This giant comp plan amendment, or, well, I mean, a comp plan amendment over, over a large area could be a, a new category that says, look, your density is what it is, but you can get the higher density if, if you do these things. Like, like we had in our P2 D V R two.
That's sort of, that's, that's sort of what we're, that's sort of what we're thinking is, is that this would, I think, be reflected on the map, that something was a bus emphasis corridor so that people would know and know that they were enabled to, that they're allowed, let's say nine units per acre by their res nine land use category. But if they do certain things and if the board approves it, then they could get higher density. But I, I would be concerned. Yeah, I, I want to have some teeth behind it to, to, to get the things that we want, which are multifaceted. We want the affordable housing. We want a development pattern that is more transit supportive in terms of its form and walkability as well. So there, there's also design function. So there, there's also design function that we need to to require if they're going to get that higher density. Um, and and that that doesn't all come along if you just give them residential twenty in the comp plan, so.
Doesn't, yeah.
So, um, let's see, I think we can jump to the next one, which I think is Beth's slide.
Yes, so what, one of the things that uh, had, has been complex about this project is that it needs. Uh, supportive policies in a number of different areas, so. You know, we're also looking at the policies relating to road infrastructure. Um, so what are the level of service standards that are appropriate in bus emphasis corridors? Can we create new standards that emphasize providing mobility? Through walking, bicycling and taking the bus. Um, do we need to still plan for that same vehicular level of service? In bus emphasis corridors if we're focusing on these other modes. Um, the bus emphasis quarters can also be used to inform other county policies. That are in development such as complete streets guidelines. Um, the speed limit policy that would be coming up. Uh, and identification of capital projects that the county is working on. The quarter preservation plan. Um, so there's, there's a lot of places that we can start looking at bus emphasis quarters. As an organizing and differentiating principle. Um, once we have agreement on what those geographic locations are. In fact, this morning at the T P O meeting, I was thinking, how do we incorporate this into our smart cities mobility plan? Um, next slide, please. Um, and then the other piece here is policies by heart. Uh, about bus service, so where heart would be identifying its. Plans for providing transit service over the next five to ten years is in the transit development plan. Um, there are other transit agencies that have started the practice of identifying core routes. So those are routes that they would be committing to focusing available resources on. So this is an example from P S T A. Uh, where they have identified some core routes. Uh, and again, this is something that we'll be working with heart. Uh, over the summer in the next update of the T D P. Uh, on how heart wishes to designate these roots and identify them uh, in their planning document. Next slide. So what could this look like? You have an image here of seventy eighth street, I mean, there are a number of these. Corridors that are existing and merging, emerging bus emphasis corridors on the preliminary map. Uh, that are in the unincorporated county Sheldon Road Waters. Seventy eighth street here, you were talking about U S forty one a moment ago. Parts of U S three oh one are already on the map. You know, so, um. Right now, some of the development that we're seeing is uh, is is not tremendously accessible to the bus stop. Uh, this development you see here on the right separated by a wall. Um, but if we had uh, different standards and different incentives, perhaps we could be looking at. Somewhat higher density and creating a more of a walking environment. To get to and from that sidewalk and that transit stop. Next slide, please. And uh, one of the questions that we've talked about quite a bit in our staff working group is what about the areas that are not. Served by heart today and I, you know, I think there is a, there is an opportunity. Um, to look beyond the existing bus service and identify future quarters. That could inform both the counties, uh, land use decisions and infrastructure decisions. Uh, and hearts prioritization process for where heart might want to, to focus service in the future. Uh, so we don't have those on the map yet, uh, but we're putting this out there for feedback. Is it something that you'd like us to explore creating? And of course, we'd be looking at the county's context, classification, redevelopment potential. Um, some of that other mapping work, um, that's been done through this interagency coordination process.
I absolutely think it's necessary and that's why I've been asking this question for the last three years. It, you know, we have a cart and a horse and and the problem is they're, they're not connected, so if. If we don't do the comprehensive plan and the zoning. Then the county's affordable housing efforts are thwarted by speculation. Because we've talked about where we're going to put transportation investments. And the, you know, the next year. Those property values, if there's any clarity to what we're describing are going to. Uh, escalate in price beyond the point of where affordable housing can actually meet the message. It has to come with the zoning. It has, in my opinion, it has to come with the comprehensive plan. Uh, designation in order to really allow for. The effective deployment of mixed income, but mixed communities. Um, connected communities that include an allocation and a commitment towards. Um, are, you know, a very large section of our workforce. Um, and you know, given the average age now, but more importantly, the, the workforce. Given our, how our economy operates. So I, I think that this is excellent, it is important to help to heart see where we're growing. So that they can plan out their T D P or their transit development plan. And outline where they would go. Um, so that they can then plan for that when their funding mechanism and in their grant application processing. Since so much of transit um, does require partnership at the state and the federal level for funding.
There's one last slide with the next steps, which, which really are to um. Continue working with heart um, on the T D P and the county on the, on the. Um, companion regulations and and incentives to to make all of this work. We wanted to get feedback on the overall concept um, before moving forward, which is why we're here today. And that concludes the, this part of the presentation and um, that I see Commissioner Kemp's hands up.
Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes, um, I just want to go back to, uh, I, I was a little confused by the slide before. Did you say that you all, like the, like. In the comprehensive plan would be naming the bus emphasis corridors somehow rather than heart for the future?
I think it would be done collectively, but in order to be a organizing principle for. Um, land use decisions. I think it would need to, to be reflected in the comprehensive plan, but we would not designate something as a bus emphasis corridor that heart was not in agreement with.
I guess I just find that kind, because usually the, you know, transit is, um, comes after. You know, the densities occur, so. And especially if you're going to get funding or ridership or um, whatever, so I, I find it. A little challenging to think of in that, especially when I think of all the corridors that are already. Important and needed that have populations that are struggling and don't have it. So I find to start to name new um, places, I found that, I find that really challenging and I find it difficult in terms of. This also somehow maybe providing a benefit for development that it shouldn't have because it's put in the wrong. Place or the wrong way because it would be in, uh, it would be like to me, you know, what's first a chicken or egg, but I think. I think that you do the corridors after you have the development, if you have that kind of development in new areas or else they're. Emerging at this time, but there's so many that have to be serviced now, I have. I have kind of an issue uh, with thinking about it in that way. Um, and and I kind of talked about this a little bit at the T P O this morning, actually, because. I've found it to be disturbing to me that there's been workshops held with. Literally more than a hundred people there in areas of the country, in county. Where there's kind of been the idea that there would be transit there. And there was no possibility, at least within the five year horizon. And we didn't even know that there would be something on the ballot in twenty eighteen. Um, but you know, uh, within the five year horizon to be able to serve those areas in any way. I, and I know we have to think about um, planning long term, but we have. Our plates so full right now with just what we have on the ground this moment. That I have trouble thinking about putting them in new areas and then saying, oh, well, we're going to give. I assume kind of benefits for developing here or whatever and then, you know, and then this expectation that. Because I feel as though our transit agency, which, as I've said many times, is the most underfunded transit agency in the nation. For metro area this size, bar none, not by a little bit, but by a huge, huge amount, critically, critically underfunded. And then for us to set expectations because I already hear those expectations and criticisms now. And say, well, why, I don't understand why they can't do this or they can't do that and it's just, I just um, find it challenging.
Okay, well, that's why our, our initial focus is on those routes that heart is serving now. Um, our understanding is that the, through the mission max, uh, they have focused on really core service routes and. We want to be realistic with this, we don't want to give away density in areas where. It's, you know, a wish and a prayer that there might be transit service one day someday, so. Um, but we also want to um, be forward thinking in the policies. That they enable additional corridors to, to be added in the future. Or that, that the process for that is is laid out so that it's clear in the future as hopefully heart has more resources to provide additional service. We might be able to consider additional corridors.
Well, and I'll just say this too, just to kind of my take on the record. Because I keep hearing how mission max was an efficiency thing, it wasn't. We killed very important and efficient corridors because we didn't have any money. And I don't think it was a plan about efficiency and I don't think it was particularly well necessarily done. I think it was a plan about cost cutting because our healthcare costs increased so much. Um, and so I just, I just want to say that, and then the other thing I want to say is that. Although the development of the high hazard coastal area with the red strike me as being. Uh, like, I, I can't even say, I don't even know why those are there, those big red things on the coast are. It was a little bit scary to see, but I do think that one of the most, um, you know, valuable corridors even already, I'm guessing. And it seems incredibly perfect for me um, as a transit corridor uh, is forty one. So I'm just going to put that back in there and I guess one of the reasons it traditionally hasn't been is because of the C S X. Uh, sometimes blocking at critical, critical times, but there is already. A big population there at Apollo Beach, there's Ruskin, there's Gibson Ten. And those are really accessible by forty one, uh, rather than three oh one or anything else and seem perfect. Um, transit routes, uh, you know, that are parallel to all the massive traffic we have on seventy five. Um, and people aren't going to be going there to, to get transit for the most part. Um, you, we, we don't have it now, but they wouldn't even go there even if it was. So anyway, I'll just um, throw that in there that I think that, in fact, that would be an important corridor. And perhaps even now, I don't know if that whole, uh, the C S X, I, I'd really like to know how much that interfered. Um, with, uh, you know, transit. Uh, as it was in the past, because I, I'm sometimes have my doubts, doubts about that lack of uh, use as a corridor again. There were such, um, we've had such extreme cost cutting measures that it was, you know, um, there's other reasons, I think. Uh, or I think cost cutting may have been uh, more a reason than others, uh, other issues sometimes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Chair Irwin, would you like to move to the next agenda item?
Yes, please, thank you. Say no other hands, there are no other items, we can move to the A three.
Great, then the next one is uh, transfer development rights and um, Adam Gormley and Kelly Clepper from uh, Kim Lee Horn will be covering that item.
Excellent, thank you, Adam, you're recognized.
Yes, good, good afternoon Commissioners, Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Uh, what we have for you today is, is a presentation on a proposed transfer development rights pilot program. Um, this is intended to address, um, one, the board's desire to facilitate. Protection of, of, of valuable areas from, uh, from future development. And also to um, provide some um, updates to, to. Concepts that are in the comprehensive plan currently regarding transfer development rights. Um, but, but what is calling for um, some additional language dealing with. Multipliers for um. Development rights transferred and maximum density levels uh, that, that can, that the transfers can relate to. Um, I think that this, this does have some good synergy with the um, two amendments that, that were already presented to you and we believe that. Um, at least for the pilot program, putting a focus on. Um, uh, bus emphasis corridors or areas where we're trying to enhance density. Um, is, is a good target for us to, to look at. So um, Kelly Klepper with uh, Kim Lee Horn is going to run through a PowerPoint uh, presentation and will be available for any uh. Questions, feedback or guidance that the board may uh, may provide for us.
Thank you, Adam, hey, welcome Kelly, it's great to see you again.
Great to see you as well, Chair, and with me today, I'd be remiss, but if I didn't say thank you, Adam, for uh, the intro and all the partnership up to this point. Uh, with me today is also Allison McGrath, one of my partners who's been working on this project as well. I do know she's having a little bit of issue with her camera, so she's here with the, the voice from above, so to speak. Um, so if you hear a voice come across, but you don't see a face, that will be Allison. Uh, so if we could go and go to the first slide. Now, some of you have seen this graphic before and remember the initial presentation that we did uh, previously. But just as a kind of a, a quick refresher and you know, what we're talking about is a transfer development rights. The county currently has a program in place, but it's not being used. So one of the things that, you know, the staff and some of you all have asked for is what can we do differently, what can we do better? And also at that time, uh, when we first started this was what are other people doing and what's working? So you know, simply put, what we're proposing is a, you know, is a pilot program and we'll talk about that in just a second. Whereby it, you know, we are, have the ability to transfer development rights from one piece of property to another. In a organized, defined manner. Uh, so if we could go to the next slide, please. So the pilot program, and it's just like it says, it's, this is the pilot program, it's a test. Uh, you know, what we're trying to do is to kind of continue to gauge the interest from the landowners that may be directly uh, affected by this or they have the ability to participate in it. And more importantly, and this is where we really want to get some, some guidance from the board is to identify those areas. Where T D Rs may be beneficial from not only where we're taking them from, but where we're going to let those uh, T D Rs and those development rights land at the end of the day. And it's like anything else, as a pilot program, we, we are talking about providing those checks and balances. We've got to have those reporting components to see how the program is doing, do we need to pivot at any time? And also is there a, ability to take what we're doing from a, a little bit more of a concentrated effort and expand it to other areas of the county? Next. So if we can go to the next slide. So in, in what we've been talking about, you know, we've been doing, like I said, quite a bit of discussion, we've done a lot of stakeholder. Uh, outreach, we've met with county staff, I will say, we've had some very insightful discussions with Simon in the I F S group. Who has provided us not only with some initial discussions with some of the, the rural landowners. But also just the insight into Hillsborough County and the agricultural economy that you have. Uh, you know, it's, it's staggering to see the numbers that come out of what the agricultural community is contributing to the, to the overall welfare of the county. And the same time, we also realize kind of like what you've been talking about recent, in his last two sessions is growth is going to continue. Where is it going to go, how do we want to help kind of guide it? How do we want to help kind of guide it? And more importantly, what are the mechanisms that we can put into place to help kind of facilitate that? You know, the, the interesting thing is, you know, we, we heard loud and clear some of the comments and some thoughts from the earlier discussions we've had with the BCC. We've, like I said, talked with county staff, with Simon. We've also taken the time, and we talked about this in just a little bit, to, to go meet and present to the Agricultural EDC group. So we've gotten some really good feedback. And of course, Adam was kind enough to send us the sustainability report, which also highlights some of the comments and thoughts from a TDR program as well. So let's go to the next slide, please. So therein, in its basic sense, what is the TDR? Well, it's comprised of two parts, sending zones and receiving zones. And in, in the simplest form, the sending zone is just those properties where someone has the ability to say, you know, I don't need or want all of my development credits on my piece of property, so I'm either going to transfer or sell those to somebody else in an area that the county commissioner said, we're, we're okay with those rights going to. Now, we also realize that there needs to be some areas where we're identifying for those credits to be able to land. And there again, this is a fully identified program in a series of areas where the county commission says, we're comfortable with credits coming off of these lands and going into these areas and under these limitations and, and/or restrictions. So you've got the sending zone, who is the individual property owner who's wanting to, as I say, preserve that agricultural activity, or depending on the nature of what we're talking about within some of the other environmentally sensitive areas, in transferring those credits to other areas of the county where there is infrastructure, where there is, you know, adequate transportation, water, wastewater, and all of the services that we really want to try to, to target. And also to help with that ever-populous sprawl word. So next. So the other aspect of this also is, we're kind of talking through it, just so you know, you know, the benefits of the sending zone person, the person who owns that property, is they get to continue doing what they're doing on the property as of right, right now. So if you've got the strawberry farmer, if you've got the aquaculture, if you've got those types of activities, then those activities continue without any reservation or restriction. What we're trying to do is come up with that program that helps with either, you know, some sort of short or long-term benefit to that property owner to allow them to sell the, the rights to that land. And instead of selling the rights altogether and development occurring in areas where, you know, we, we may not really want it as a county. Those receiving areas are there again, are those where you're, you're targeting some additional residential densities, potentially could even look at some non-residential transfers so that we're, you know, putting some additional non-residential or some transit-oriented development in areas where that infrastructure goes. But, you know, one of the things we also identified early on, and we've been talking about with staff, is there's got to be, for the, the property owner that is looking at that sending zone, there's got to be some inherent benefit. It can't just be the status quo. And one of the things that we're going to identify here in just a few moments is a potential kind of calculator or multiplier that, you know, we've worked with in a couple of different places, that says, you know, it's not a one-to-one transfer. If you've got, we'll say, five credits or five units that you could build on your property now, to transfer those off of the property, realistically, monetarily, from a, from a value perspective, it's not going to make sense for that person to enter into a TDR program if it is a one-to-one transfer. So there's got to be some sort of incentive. And the other thing about this is, this is a voluntary program. The county can set up the rules and the regulations and start looking at those areas. But there's, you know, there's not a thou shall type of moment here that says, you, you shall enter into an agreement for the TDR program. This is purely an incentive and another tool in the county's toolbox to help with the rural land protection and sustainability, and also protecting that agricultural economy that you have. So next slide, please. So you, you may have seen this slide previously as well. Of course, I'm trying to remember which commissioner was talking about some of the growth earlier, and, you know, the, the housing stock that you have. Initially, in one of our earlier discussions, we had possible areas for sending zones and receiving zones. But instead, what we said is, let's strip that off. Let's not, you know, take you down a pathway that some of the commissioners may not be, you know, supportive of. But, you know, what are your thoughts? What would, do you think, in talking with your constituents and the area that you represent, what makes the most sense? Is it the lands in, you know, in South Hillsborough County? Is it the lands that are within the coastal high hazard as far as those sending zones? Areas where we can transfer credits? Are there certain areas that makes the most sense within some of those transit corridors, or where we have some of the affordable housing overlays? So that's where we really kind of want to get some thoughts and some ideas from this group, and simply just ask, you know, what makes sense? And where would you support both the ability to transfer those credits off of lands? And where would you support those credits being provided to or land at the end of the day? So next slide?
Kelly, before you leave this slide, can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
There's, you know, I see blue, and I see red, and I see yellow, and I see green, and I see the urban service area.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm not seeing what the white is.
Yeah, the white is either, that's the incorporated areas of the county, or some of those that are already identified or developed. So the areas that are colored are actually vacant lands, so to speak. And we, and we did pull this information from the, the property appraiser.
So the colors are actually just sending zones, or potential sending zones?
That could be a potential sending zone. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, but the, the single-family residential greater than 10 acres, there's a few yellow dots, although it's difficult to see on, on the slide. But I mean, you can see it. There are a few. But, but my point is, for example, on the outside of the incorporated areas of the city of Tampa and Plant City, you know, to the east is, you know, a great big blob of white area that's not incorporated, but it has been developed.
Correct.
And, and we see that also the case up in the northwest corner, where we have areas that are inside the urban service areas, but the community really still considers themselves rural, and the road structure, okay, is rural.
Correct.
In other words, we have the minimum standard rural road in a lot of these communities that, in my opinion, are not eligible for additional densities because of the lack of Vision Zero type of infrastructure in place at the moment. So when you're, you ask about, you know, potential receiving zones, you know, one, I think the first priority would be areas that would be identified for affordable housing, and the formula would reflect a greater credit, or, or it has to be in line with whatever the density bonus maximum could be, or an area that would be identified as either a bus emphasis corridor, or transit-oriented development corridor, where the maximum density would be available or wanted in those areas. And those areas traditionally would have the available infrastructure that you have listed on here as being eligible for receiving zone. A substandard road is not what I consider eligible receiving zone. So, so I, and the big white blob to the east of Tampa, that is largely, you know, parts of, parts of our District Four, that, that was rural and has now become very, very suburban, but the inner, the infrastructure in that area that does not, other than in the actual development, doesn't support Vision Zero guidelines for infrastructure rise when it comes to transportation, for example. Would, would not be, in my mind, a receiving zone unless there was an agreement by the developer to create the Vision Zero roadway, you know, which frequently is not available in the part of the deal, you know? So I, I think it's going to be very important that we recognize that, you know, from agricultural to suburban is not optimal. Agriculture to bus emphasis corridors, or to, you know, one of the other classifications where walkable communities is a goal, or, or walkable community development is a goal that connects to corridors, or at least pretty close to corridors, might be appropriate. But taking the, the development right from an agricultural piece of land that has a land use that permits, you know, either one house per acre, or two houses per acre, or something like that, where there's no infrastructure to support that in the first place, and it allows for septic, is, is a very different equation versus how do you value an agricultural operation for financing and respect the business that's there? You know, the legacy of agriculture that once it's gone, it's gone.
Right.
Right? So, you know, it's not like you can return it to agriculture when you've got two houses, you know, per acre. So, so it's a, it's a permanent change until, once the decision to develop has been determined. But the equation for financing for many of these operations is inherently embedded in, you know, what's the potential development goal? What's the entitlement associated with that land? And so it does have to be, in our, I think, for it to work, it has to really reflect what is a permanent, for, say, the next 20 years, commitment to the operation and the value of that rural land, whether it be for agricultural production, or whether it be for wildlife corridor, or whether it be for flood or, you know, flood mitigation, or the environmental goals that we have within the community, which it's very clear, there's a lot of green there. And that's because we recognize we can't, you know, we need to, we need to protect those areas for environmental reasons and ecological reasons. But the, in the next slide, we look at the equation?
Now, we actually look at it in just, in, after this slide, but if I could just kind of respond to a couple of things, Commissioner Overman. So first and foremost, great observations. Two, this is the exact reason we're here today and have been working with Adam and Simon, and also with the Agricultural EDC, because we realize one size does not fit all. We're definitely not here to say, okay, just open it up because what you have isn't working. To the contrary, we're saying, and that's the reason we're calling it a pilot project, we need to be very specific on what we're doing, how we do it, and where, so that we have those parameters laid out so that, you know, the situations that you were talking about, Commissioner Overman, don't happen. Or if, you know, what, what are the steps? What are the requirements for those types of properties to be able to be receiving areas? So, great comment, absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thanks. Go ahead.
So, yeah, so kind of summarize where we are right now. Like I said, we, we've spent, when I say a couple of hours, to say the least, with Simon, and also with the Ag, the Agricultural EDC. If, if you've never had a chance to sit down with some of those folks and just kind of talk to them about their, their loan and how it relates to their planting season and harvest and everything else, it is truly educational. You know, I grew up in, in rural East Tennessee, never had to deal with some of this stuff, but, you know, just listening to especially how the, the loans are set up with some of these properties is, is very eye-opening. And I think that has kind of helped us formulate some of the things that we're talking about in the policies that we're, they were kind of looking at today. So, yeah, if we could go to the next slide. So there again, these are just hypotheticals. You know, we've looked at a couple of different areas and some of the, the rates. You know, depending on how a, an acre of land is, or, you know, a parcel of land is identified, when we start looking at what's its value coming off of that, it's not only, you know, is, you know, is it just a raw piece of land? You know, are there certain types of, whether it's agricultural or ecological, or, you know, there's areas that, as, as you see there, the board considers to be of a high importance. Now, you can actually assign different credits. If you said, hey, Kelly and Allison, you know, the agricultural value, we think should be higher because of X, then, you know, we, we've got some formulas that we can look to say, okay, you know, it makes sense to go to this level. But there again, the idea is, we're not saying it's a one-to-one transfer ratio. And, you know, one, one, one-to-one and a quarter, or even one and a half, may be too low to incentivize some of these develop, I mean, some of the landowners to participate in the program. And that's where we're talking about, you know, the pilot program, what works, and do we need to kind of revisit some of this? At the same time, we also realize that the county has to have a seat at the table, it, it very, from the very beginning on establishing these rates, because the, this, this board is going to be the ones to basically say, we support this type of ratio, and that's going to generate X number of potential credits that can be put somewhere else. So if we can go to the next slide.
My personal, my personal point was agricultural value actually has a greater long-term economic and environmental impact, is actually, it's, they're lopped on top of each other. We get the environmental impact oftentimes is positive, depending on the agricultural product, project, product, but also the economic, you know, return to it is, is on top of, in my opinion, the ecological, because you get both when you, when you keep or preserve land for, for agricultural purposes. So that's why I was, when I was looking at it, I'm thinking, huh, I wonder how this actually correlates to the economic equation associated with the value of that economic impact on our community. And, and that value needs to be embedded in this, in this formula for it to actually, I believe it to work for the industry as a whole. And that's what I've, that I'm looking for from, as you have learned, the complicated agricultural financing, you know, mechanism that has now been morphed into utilizing develop, development right entitlements as the basis for financing, that doesn't have anything to do with the value of the agriculture as a, as a part of our economy. And that's, that's why I wanted to kind of bring that to your attention.
Absolutely. And, you know, the other thing I'll say is, you know, after growing up in East Tennessee, I actually lived in central Kentucky, so horse country, and became very good, close friends with a lot of folks that had rural lands, whether it was for act production, horse, you know, the thoroughbred industry. And what you start to learn very quickly is, you know, that land is their individual 401K.
Yeah.
Pure and simple. And, you know, they've got to look at what's going to make the most sense. And, you know, unfortunately, what happens a lot of times is that, you know, their kids or their grandkids do not want to continue that way of life. So without somebody there to purchase the land or to continue that ag, the easy thing to do is say, okay, we're going to put it up for development. Unfortunately, I will say that we've looked at a couple of the more recent land sales in the unincorporated areas of Hillsborough County, and some of those are staggering, to say the least. And I know you all have seen those as well. And hopefully that is not the continued trend that we're seeing, because that's just going to put even more pressure on what we're talking about here in that rural development.
But that's the rent, that's the rent, that's the build-to-rent trend that the industry is utilizing, because there are no protections in Florida on rental increases. And so it is, you know, the development rate, I would say probably at that point, the rate of return or the cap rate is equivalent to commercial rental at this point. And so there is the, you know, there is that, that level of speculation currently in the marketplace when it comes to open land that creates, you know, that has an entitlement that's pretty high already. You know, it was too high when I got here, much less high now. So, and I, and that, that is going to continue. I mean, the policy basically, you know, allows for that, that, that part of the market that is speculating on, on increasing no, no barrier to growth rents to twist the market into a frenzy that we cannot sustain.
So what we wanted to do is just kind of throw out a hypothetical of a, you know, just a generic piece of property that you may find out in, in the unincorporated areas. And let's assume that it's 100 acres. We ran a couple of scenarios and said, okay, you know, there again, this is a voluntary program. So there's three options that that property owner has if the TDR program's in place. One is the status quo, continue to do what they're doing under the current land use and the zoning. B is what you're seeing right now, which is that, you know, that rezoning to allow those two dwelling units per acre. Or the third option is to participate in the TDR program to some level of development. Now there again, we were using the credits that we had identified in that previous slide, not saying those are right or wrong, but, you know, this is, that, that potential owner could have the ability to sell upwards of 100 But, you know, this is, that, that potential owner could have the ability to sell upwards of 135 credits. Now you may go, well, Kelly, that doesn't make much sense to the farmer, especially if they could get two units per acre on that 100 acres, that's 200 and you're only allowing them to sell the 135. And that's where we say, you know, what is that right mix? What is that right number? And that actually gets us into our next slide, which is kind of where we want to ask those questions. So if we can go to the next one. So, you know, what, what are the next steps? One is, you know, we, we should, the first word we should put on here is just listen. Listen to the comments that we, that we hear from this board in this meeting today. But ultimately, we know we've got to update the conference of plan. We, we need to identify what, what are those sending zones and the receiving zones? And then ultimately also look at the land development code and those specific requirements that, you know, is there a sunset date for the pilot program as a whole? What's the term for the, the time that the transfers are valid for? What is the maximum amount of increase of density for those sending zones and receiving zones? And then also, you know, if, if the board wanted to, to start kind of getting into the non-residential component. What we've kind of talked about with staff is let's start off with a small step. Let's look, focus in on those residential only components. The, the non-residential will definitely come along, but if the board or Adam or somebody else said, no, we want to do that. And of course, we dive into that at that point. So what I'd like to do at this point is, is just like I said, we want to listen. We want to listen to what your thoughts are. Some of the comments, just like you were saying just a second ago, Commissioner Overman, with some hesitations and limitations on certain areas. And also allow, you know, you all to ask Allison and myself some questions at this point.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm not seeing any questions at the moment. I did want to ask, you know, part of the reason why sometimes these programs don't work is because, you know, we are faced with the entitlements for our land, but it's still zone rural. And, you know, because it has entitlements, it's, it's no quote unquote, big deal to move it to, you know, AS1 or, you know, two acres per, two houses, two dwellings per acre. Because we permit it, even though the infrastructure is not there. Or at least not the desired infrastructure. You know, we are, you know, spending 25% of our, of affordable housing money, trust, trust money that we send to Tallahassee is going to septic to sewer conversion. And yet, you know, we don't bat an eye to move from a rural to, you know, two acres per dwelling when there's, there's no required infrastructure connection, you know, issue outside of the urban service area. So I, you know, so that for a TDR to work where we're moving from rural, you know, to keeping it at rural, but respecting the entitlement, it's got to be an equation that matters. For, as you said, if they, if they're going to make more money, you know, over time to sell the property because it has the right to develop two properties on it or two homes on it, why are they going to participate in this program other than they need, you know, 200 acres to do their operation? And that, you know, that five acre or that one acre piece matters. But I, the equation's got to work. And, and there's, that's where I think it's, I think you're on the right track. I think it's critical that we have the receiving zones be in those areas we've identified specifically for investment, not only in infrastructure when it comes to water, sewer and solid waste management, fire rescue, sheriff, the whole nine yards. But also where it is a key indicator on transportation network being sufficient. So if it's, you know, we've gotten to a point where we now have 20 dwelling units on an acre or whatever, you know, the, what is it? What's that zone, Adam, where you have 20 units or something 20? You know, that has to have a substantial transportation infrastructure around it for it to be just sane. Just if it doesn't, it's not sane. So, because it does set up people for not being, for having to be car centric and not being able to be safe on the roads. So having the, that receiving zone be in an area where we either potentially are going to invest in enhancing and increasing the safety levels of our transportation network. Or where we have identified those areas that would be appropriate for transit investment, whether it be fixed guideway or bus rapid transit or, you know, regular bus service to be able to facilitate people getting around.
Great. Well, I think you hit the nail on the head about why we wanted all these presentations to be lined up in this workshop together, Commissioner. I don't know if there are any other questions on the TDRs, otherwise we have one last presentation for you today on the update of commercial locational criteria.
Thank you. And is Ms. Leinhardt going to do that one?
Yes, she is. So.
I am. I see you popped up. So. Good afternoon. Thank you for, for covering this.
Good afternoon. That was my subtle cue to try to move this on because I know we're all being sensitive to your schedules. It's already after 3:30. So, so thank you for having us today. My name's Melissa Leinhardt. For the record, Planning Commission staff, I'm going to provide you with a brief update on how the commercial locational criteria study is progressing. And you can advance two slides, please. Yes, the next one. Thank you so much. So the commercial locational criteria or CLC, I'll say to save time, is currently found within Objective 22 of the future land use element. So as part of this update, Planning Commission staff has tasked the consultant that we're working with, SNME, with revising these provisions to ensure that residents can meet their daily needs for goods and services within a reasonable distance from their neighborhood, that commercial activities are integrated seamlessly into the nearby neighborhoods. And the new commercial, which does serve nearby neighborhoods, wouldn't require a plan amendment. Next slide, please. And while that slide is advancing, I just wanted to, we've asked, we've gotten two questions asked about that. One regarding the daily needs. And for the purpose of this study, daily needs generally includes things like fresh food, professional services, healthcare and eateries. And then the other question that we've been getting at the meetings is how do you define neighborhood serving uses? And those are essentially uses that are scaled in a size and manner that are intended to serve nearby neighborhoods. So a good example is a CVS that can serve one or two neighborhoods versus a Walmart superstore, which may service multiple neighborhoods or even entire communities. So for this slide, we wanted to show you that Planning Commission staff and our consultant, SNME, have implemented an extensive online and in-person public engagement program for this effort. Generally, this program can be summarized into one of two categories. So we have methods on the left or in the blue. And then the meetings are in green on the right. Examples of some of the methods that we've implemented include some newspaper advertisements. We've been on social media quite a bit. We've advertised in our Plan Hillsborough newsletter. We also partnered with Hillsborough County Communications. And then for the meetings, we've done individual interviews with the board, as you all know. We did one group interview with the planning commission. We've conducted two community meetings so far, one in November and then one in January of this year. And then we have a third and final community meeting scheduled for June 3rd, and that will be all virtual. We've had several meetings with county staff. And then we've had three distinct stakeholder interviews. And you can read the various groups on the slide to save us a little bit of time. And then you can also review the results of the public engagement program on the project website by downloading the public engagement summary memorandum that's on our website. Next slide, please. So when we met with the board last November, our primary objectives were to introduce the project and then solicit your feedback. And that feedback we were requesting was regarding the scale of permitted uses, how and where commercial uses should be located, the importance of accessibility and connectivity, and then how the CLC should speak to other provisions of the comprehensive plan, and most notably, the contents of the community plans. And although we received a lot of great feedback at those individual briefings, the following items were your primary recommendations for your effort. That uses by, permitted by the CLC should be scaled appropriately and also match the character of the neighborhood. That commercial uses should be clustered and preferably at intersections. That connections to neighborhoods should be appropriately shaded, well maintained and accessible. And that the CLC should not supersede the provisions of the community plans. Next slide, please. And so address, to address that feedback regarding scaling, clustering, connectivity, respecting the existing community plans, we've proposed some changes to the content of the CLC. And I'll go through the major revisions here. One is to limit the types of uses which are eligible for CLC to neighborhood serving uses. And in that respect, auto-oriented uses would not qualify. And then the other item on this slide is to limit the scale of individual establishments to 20,000 square feet to keep them at a neighborhood scale. And then allowing up to 50,000 square feet for neighborhood grocery stores. And then proposed developments exceeding those requirements would be expected to pursue.
Amanda, can you call me on my cell phone?
Excuse me?
Someone's speaking.
My apologies.
Oh, that's okay. That's someone was talking to me.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, great. And then next slide, please. And one of the elements of the CLC that we spent a lot of time examining was the current waiver process. Today, Planning Commission staff receives a significant number of waiver requests for the provisions of the CLC. So to us, that was a clear sign that this objective and its associated policies really needed amending and some looking at. So our current language allows waivers to location and distance requirements. It does expressly prohibit waivers to square footage. And we've just noticed that some of the waivers may have been requested because the current map that we use, which is part of the adopted language in the future land use element, is the 2040 cost affordable LRTP map. And that was used to determine the appropriateness of the location. So with the new proposed language, the waivers would allow minimum, a waiver to minimum separation requirements between the nodes as well as where buildings are placed. It would specifically prohibit waivers to uses, square footages and distance requirements. And to answer the question about the outdated map, we've done a lot of research and work with a lot of county staff to determine that the best approach would be to rely on the Hillsborough County as well as the FDOT context classification maps to help us determine what, what locations are appropriate. Next slide, please. Finally, we wanted to ensure that, thank you. Finally, we wanted to ensure that new development projects permitted by CLC would be designed in a manner which not only makes it compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods, but would also result in a good urban form where appropriate. We also want to make sure that these new developments connect into existing neighborhoods wherever possible. So that could be pedestrian paths or requiring stub outs when adjacent properties are undeveloped. And finally, we wanted to make sure that the provisions of the CLC were speaking to the county's existing community plans. So we added a policy stating that new rezoning applications must consider if the request is consistent with the community plans that are adopted and contained within the livable communities element. Next slide, please. This is showing our proposed timeline. So just quickly getting through this, we're right here in May with the, we did brief the Planning Commission on Monday. We're briefing you today as part of this workshop. We have the community meeting, the third one scheduled for June 2nd, as I mentioned. We also have the schedule for draft four language is in June, toward the end of June. We would have the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioner, public hearings in August with the adoption hearings scheduled with you all in October. Next slide, please. So sort of cleaning up here, we strongly encourage everyone to visit and share the project website as well as the county's CLC study page. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions that you have. And in addition, Pat Tyuski, she's from our consultant team. She's also here virtually and can assist in answering questions as well.
Excellent. Thank you very, very much for that presentation. Another thing I'm going to ask is the, that each of these four presentations have talked about community meetings. If you wouldn't mind putting them in one email for each of the different plan amendments to, to alert the commissioners, to give them an opportunity to put that on their calendars so that if there's an opportunity, they could either listen or have staff listen. I think that would help us move along in our planning for the next step. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'm really glad to see the locational criteria out there being studied. And I see where, you know, clustering and I can understand intersections. Although sometimes, I mean, organically, when things grow, they can sometimes grow mid-block and be totally comfortable. But I know that, you know, the way that we do it now is not, is not quite that. I'm still concerned about the size. So you have 20,000 square feet for retail. And, you know, I've seen some best practices for in these smaller areas as kind of even 10,000 to 8,000 square feet. Because when you make them 20,000 square feet, you price them out to small business owners, to startups, to the kinds of unique places that I think people are looking for in communities and that develop this rather than, you know, your chain that can just move in there and do whatever. I also think the 50,000 square feet for the grocery store, I quickly looked that up. I don't know what the, I think the big ones that they have out there now, I just, my memory is 70,000, but I just real fast Googled and it's, and I got this, it's from 2014. A few years back, the average size of a grocery store was measured at 40,000 square feet, up from 35,000 square feet in the mid 90s. So you've got 50,000 square feet there. And I really think that we're trending back to smaller grocery accommodations and people aren't looking for the massive places. And if they are, they can drive their car to whatever those, you know, massive places are everywhere. But I, I really find especially the grocery store footprint to be, you know, I, I just, then we have the whole thing of, oh, you can't get, the whole issues of the chains don't, you know, want to come in unless it's that. And what, I, I mean, I'm really started trying to see if we can look for something a little different and more accommodating to the placemaking and town center and walkable places and not the gross, not the always car, bigger box, bigger scale, all that stuff. So I'll just say that.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good comment. And I can, I can ask Pat if she wants to comment on that. But just real quick, she was the consultant kind of dug into more of the methodology portion. But the, as far as the placemaking is concerned, that's why we wanted to introduce more of the form as part of the criteria that someone would need to meet. So building placement and things like that, where you have parking in the back of a building, that would help with that walkability and scale component. And, and again, Pat, if you want to jump in, you can. But from my understanding, the 20,000, we were trying to try to find, trying to strike a balance for something that's reasonable and also try to keep it at a neighborhood scale. But we didn't want to create food deserts. And that was one of our major concerns with the grocery stores because they do tend to be larger in scale. That from our research, it seemed that if we kept it around 50,000 for the grocery store use, that it would be something that we could have at a corner and a neighborhood could take advantage of it. But we wouldn't be creating those food deserts.
Yes, Pat Tyuski has sent me. We heard a great comment from the Planning Commission earlier this week. They said that St. Pete has a program that encourages the local business owners. We're going to look into that and see if it is something that we can replicate here. But, but the whole idea, you know, for us, the issue, the main issue is going from what we have today, which is 175,000 with no limitation per tenant, per business, and then narrowing it down to these numbers that we came up with. And part of the exercise different parts of the country and trying to see, okay, this smaller public store. Because when we go into the, what's the, the name of the Trader Joe's? It's like, it doesn't really meet the standard of bringing just fresh groceries to the neighborhoods where we need them. So we were looking at the typical small public size, you know, how we fit them in the 50,000 square feet. And that was the magic number that came up with just by looking at examples. And the 20,000, yeah, there are some stores that could come in at smaller than that. But one that we looked at, for example, was the Ace Hardware. We don't want the Home Depot, but Ace Hardware is a neighborhood store. And typically, they need a little more space than just a nail salon or, you know, the other spaces. So we're trying to accommodate the different uses.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't know what the square footages are, but I'm just, I. I don't know what the square footages are, but I'm just, I, I'm really pushing for, you know, what we can do reasonably in, in a less big box, a tractor, chain type of environment and whatever ways that we can use to create or make, make it more possible for that to happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, because I'm actually right there with you. We, we've heard developers come to us and say, well, you know, in order to support, you know, the Walmart sized store, you know, there, this community is not big enough, so we don't, we want to waiver from requiring the commercial element, you know, the mixed use, community benefit element. And so my question is, for example, on this, when you talk about limited scale, individual establishments to $20,000, 20,000 square feet, I mean, what is the size of the average daycare?
You want to take that, Melissa? Because the daycares are not considered neighborhood commercial.
Right. That, that is true. I mean, as far as an average is concerned, I mean, we see like five to 12, 15 sometimes, depending on the size and the location of where they are. But those would be considered neighborhood serving, I'm sorry, residential support uses? Sorry, scratch the neighborhood serving. I was on a, I was on a roll of my brain. Those would be considered residential support uses. So those are things like schools and churches, daycares, those types of things. And those are allowed in any residential plan category. So those would be considered differently than under the CLC.
So a blind tiger or Starbucks would be what?
A coffee shop would be neighborhood serving.
Would be neighborhood. And, and would it be more than 20,000 square feet?
No, we do not. I mean, I, I, most coffee shops I've ever been to are considerably smaller than that. So those would be allowed. It's 20,000 is the cap.
Cap, the top. Okay, okay. That's what I was trying to make sure I was, when I looked at.
Smaller, we would encourage smaller.
Yes.
Yeah, encouraged.
A lot of your service industries, not necessarily, you know, social services, but your service industries, small boutiques, farmers markets that incorporate both inside and outside are going to be smaller than that 20,000. So that's why I was asking. Okay. Well, this is excellent. I, I like seeing it. I like, you know, if we actually remove the need to have a wall the way around a property that connects it, allows it to be disconnected from the neighborhood, that'd be kind of cool too. I'm driving down 60 the other day. You know, I'm, I see two, one's, one's a gas station and the other is a, you know, retail store and it's on 60 and there's a wall around both of them to the point where you can't get into the property except for the sidewalk on the front. That is not neighborhood serving anymore. It's car centric. So what we want to get away from is the total suburban design in neighborhoods that are becoming a little more urbanized, like ex-urban, but not, you know, not suburb, not rural, but, and not suburban per se, because the suburbs are all, you know, houses in a bag. But where you can't get there anyway. But any new, new development that is able to connect to neighborhood services, I think would be very valuable in our, as we grow and develop the infrastructure necessary to serve these communities. So great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised and I know we're running long. So thank you very, very much. There was, these were, like I said, I've been waiting a couple of years for these. So I really appreciate you lumping them together. It made a lot of sense. And have a wonderful day, unless I, I don't see anybody else or any other questions.
Thank you so much for all of your time this afternoon and feedback. We really appreciate it as we move these forward. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.